... we're starting to come up. The light will be on in a minute. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to May 1st, 2017. Board of Supervisors meeting. Called to order at this time and ask Mr. Slade if he would do our implication.
That's great. Father, what a blessed morning it is. Thank you, Father. You know, Father, we acknowledge that you are the Creator. You're the one that gives us life and breath. Father, you're the one that gives us the wisdom and discernment that we need. And we call on you now, Lord, to give us the wisdom we need to make good decisions. Father, oftentimes, we are reminded just how fortunate we are to live in a community where we can participate in our government. Father, where there's an openness to receive information. Father, where the men who you've assigned the responsibility over us are concerned about what the community thinks. Father, I pray that you would just let us take advantage of that. Help us to never take it for granted. Father, we just praise you and bless your holy name in Christ.
Amen.
Okay, we don't have any public comments today, so we'll move to old business. I have a motion approved minutes.
Sir, move.
April 17th.
Sir, move.
Motion for Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed. All right, sent agenda.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow. Second by myself. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed. Judy Fortenberry.
She's not here today, so she has that I take.
So John's not gonna do it?
Well, she asked me. He's welcome to. The first thing is request to void 2015 tax sale. PPI number 36068 for the 2014. This parcel matured to the state and should not have been sold for, in the tax sale.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed.
The next item is request approval for Judy Fortenberry to attend the MACA Annual Conference in Biloxi, July 16th through the 20th, and pay travel-related expenses.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Cross. Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed.
Request approval to pay registration fee in the amount of $250 per person to send four clerks to the tax collector, One Class in Raymond, May 15th through the 19th, and pay for travel-related expenses.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Next item is request approval to send two employees to attend the bookkeeper's training conference, May 24th and 25th, and three employees to attend the expert user training, July 10th through the 13th, for the new tag and title system through the state DOR, and pay travel-related expenses.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed. John Sullivan.
Two items. Item A, petition to change the assessment, 2016 real and personal property assessments.
Sir, move.
Second.
Approved by Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
And item B, request to void 2015-16 tax sales. We coded it, should have been exempt.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow or Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item I have this morning, I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for the unit system for the semiannual joint asphalt bids and the semiannual supplies for the road department.
Most to approve.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed.
My second item, I'm requesting approval of copier contracts with Southern duplicating for the tax assessor and the tax collector's office. These are replacing machines that are about to expire.
Sir, move.
Second. Motion approved, Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Harrison.
Road work accomplished for the month of April. Road work scheduled for the month of May.
Motion approved by Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed. I would say we were lucky to dodge the bullet left today.
Very lucky. Request approval for AT&amp;T utility permit, construct four-inch conductor fibers along the route of Holly Bush installed with 27, 27, 27, Holly Bush Road and 100 Adams Lane.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
All right, Mike, about where is 727 on Holly Bush?
It's gonna be down there right before you get to Stump Ridge in there.
So it's gonna, will this extend all, will this now connect?
Well, it's going from, it's actually going from right there at Reservoir East.
Yeah, okay, so that's.
Down through there, right there at Adam's Run, right there.
That was my question. It was, we're now gonna connect.
Hey.
Quite a new subdivision in there.
Let me add one thing to AT&amp;T just a second. And I'm assuming that's who it is. I was coming out this morning, it's kind of maybe not on the same thing, but right there on Bradford, they're laying, I guess, fiber right there on Bradford, but they cut into our street across the middle of the road. Got a gash the size of four and a half feet long, probably a foot wide. A note or something on that. I'm assuming that's AT&amp;T. Whoever's running fiber on Bradford, right around the Tinby Cross Street, they cut that across that road. Is that normal thing for them to cut across the road like that on?
I'm not recalling any permit right there, Daniel. I mean, I'm pretty well remembered.
They cut it through the road.
Well, they usually board it anyway, I think.
Yeah, well, this is cut through the asphalt, so.
Board, let me see.
But that's Bradford at Cross Street at Tinby, somewhere in that area. Maybe within 100 yards, one side of the, one side of the other, when I saw it this morning.
Okay.
And I'm assuming it's AT&amp;T, because they've been laying fiber in that area, but.
There's some utility company.
Somebody's cutting our road.
Right.
Sorry about that. Ain't nothing to do with Holly Bush, but.
No, that's, I need to know if y'all see it.
All right, I was just a second. Yeah, and then you just brought it up, okay. All right, Steve.
Request approval for AT&amp;T utility permit for copper telephone service wire utility along across Stump Ridge Road to be installed between Lawrence and Taylorway.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed.
Request approval for AT&amp;T utility permit to construct fiber optic utility along Gully Shallow Road, be installed between Highway 80 and 169 Gully Shallow Road.
Sir, move.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Mike.
Only one, you just want to go on and get it.
The only item that I have is what State Aid refers to as a complex bridge program. And I'm recommending approval of a board order, an authority for the president to execute that board order. This is something that the State Aid will pay for out of their funds. They hire firm and they do this statewide on certain bridges. There are four bridges involved in this. The Old Highway 49 Bridge at Rishland Creek, the Flower Drive Bridge at Hall Creek, the Bay Cause Way at Pila Hachi Bay, and the Mill Creek Bridge at Spillway Road. That's four that they will include.
Sir, move.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen. Items A and B, if you don't mind, we can take those together to be set. It will set two public hearings, June 5, 2017, 9:00 a.m. Michael Brooks, Sr., rezoning requests at Stump Ridge, and Nicholas Collier, conditional use permit, 150 Collier Road.
Motion set these public hearings.
Sir, move.
Second.
Motion sets public hearings by Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Next item is a public hearing on the LMNR Service, Inc., conditional use permit, 200 Beggarly Place, District One property. We'll open that public hearing. LMNR Service, Inc. is seeking a conditional use permit to surface mine four acres of 138-acre parcel at 200 Beggarly Place. They have applied to DEQ for a notice of exempt operation. The property owner is Chris Beggarly, and he is removing the dirt from the property to build a pond to provide water for cows. So this time, we'll open that public hearing if it's not already open, and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the LMNR Service, Inc. conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition to that? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. Unless you guys have questions, we'll close that public hearing. It'll be appropriate to take action.
I make motion approved.
Second.
First, motion by myself. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed.
Next item is the public hearing on the Ryan Murphy Conditional Use Permit, Stoll Road, District Four. Mr. Murphy is seeking a conditional use permit to surface mine 3.9 acres of a 202.5 total acre parcel on Stoll Road. He is, he's already been approved for a notice of exempt operation from DEQ, and the property is zoned RE1. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Ryan Murphy Conditional Use Permit, Stoll Road. Anyone? Speak in opposition?
Craig.
Yes, sir.
Can you, because there was a notice and some people inquired, the actual application that they might be here for.
Yes, sir, right.
Was rescinded or pulled back. That was 127 or.
Yes, sir. It was modified from 125 acres. Correct. The initial application for exempt operation, I'm sorry, not exempt operation, but the initial application was for a surface mining permit of 125 acres of the total parcel. That application has been withdrawn and substituted with a 3.9, a much smaller pit operation, so to speak, that allows it to qualify under DEQ's regs for an exempt operation. So it's been very much tailored back to a small site for the removal of the dirt. The, in conjunction with the mining operation, there is the beginnings of a development, a subdivision development that is under review. This will be a large, is proposed to be a large lot development. Ryan held me, what's the name of the development?
Oak Creek Plantation.
That's right.
This, despite the fact that it looks like I'm carrying the floor for him, all I'm doing is displaying what we know at this point. This, this would be the proposed development, Oak Creek Plantation. This is a preliminary layout. It's not a final layout, but it shows approximately 42 lots on a 200-acre site, which means that the lots are fairly. It's got two entrances off of Stoll, a couple cul-de-sac, and Ring Road, I'll call it. But anyway, that's, that's sort of, that's what's on tap. What's before us today is the application for a surface mining operation that's limited to less than four acres. Okay? So does anyone have any other questions or any opposition? You'll come forward, please. State your name and address.
Good morning.
Oh, yes, I'm Kathy Taylor. I live at 432 Stoll Road, which is about halfway down Stoll. I just wanted to know if there was a time limit on that operation, or how long we'd be looking at trucks and mud up here?
I wish we could have Mr. Murphy put on his part, and then if you have an opposition, I think it would clear up a lot of this. Because, yes, there are time limits and date, and only daytime runs and a lot of stuff like that.
Okay.
If Mr. Murphy could.
Sure.
Is that okay, Craig?
Yes, sir. In fact, I've got the conditions here, Steve, that I could recite for us. This is what we discussed in our preliminary developer conference. So I'll be glad to. Let me, let me get those on the record here, and then, Ryan, if you or Mark, if you want to.
These may answer some of your questions, ma'am. What these things, they may answer some of your questions.
So that it's clear, this is a conditional use application, which means that this board can effect, can place onto the use conditions. And so the typical conditions, and those that have already been discussed with the property owner, are these. There will be limited hours of operation. Those hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The, the property owner is required to control dust, dirt, anything with a, with a water truck on site, and all of the Rankin County stormwater requirements must be met by the property owner. This would include siltation, silt fence, all that other kind of stuff that goes along with stormwater regs. Also, one additional condition is that the permit is limited to not to exceed 90 days, which will give the property owner enough time to come forward with a, a more accurate preliminary plat on the subdivision development.
Approved preliminary plat with the engineer and with.
Correct. And so the property owner believes that a period of 90 days would be sufficient to allow them to complete that process. So those would be the four conditions. I left anything out. All right.
Anybody got any questions now that you heard that?
David Hutchins, 132 September Lane. It's a private drive that actually adjoins the discussed property. And the question that I have with the 3.9 acres, if it, if it comes up in the future to be rezoned into a larger, back to the 120 approximate, is there gonna be another official proposed zoning board?
90 days, and this expires, and we're back to zero. I mean, what, what our plan is, within 90 days, his team will have the approved subdivision plans through the engineer's office and through our community development to go with a development that we approved and we've already discussed. I mean, we're talking about 40, 42 lots, three acres and more, minimum square footage on the houses. I mean, I think they're gonna do something that is gonna make the neighborhood proud.
Okay.
But, but yes, it will, at the end of 90 days, we're done as far as the dirt pit or moving dirt out of there. Now, in all construction developments, there's dirt that comes in and out to build house pads and stuff like that, but it'll be under the plan that Mr. Parker approves for a residential development.
Sure. I guess I have, the question I have for the board is, 70 days expires, and it, when it, if it comes back up, say, the surface mine comes back again, is there gonna be a proposed zoning board notice that way?
Right, it'll be a public, another public hearing.
Okay.
But what he's saying is that's not, that's not coming back up.
But you'll be notified whenever any more work's done.
But you'd be, you'd have a notice of anything else that's gonna happen to the property.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that it's clear, the property is currently zoned RE1, which allows for subdivision development within it. There's not going to be a zoning hearing to address the issue of zoning for this property under the proposed use, right? Because the development exceeds the minimum one acre per lot that would be required under the zoning. So only clear.
So then there won't be, there won't be another posting then?
Yeah, the question is, I appreciate it. The question that came to you was, if they want to restart surface mining operations, would we know about that in advance? And the answer is yes, because the 90-day clock will have expired on the current surface mining permit. He wouldn't have a surface mining permit. He would have to come back before the board to acquire a surface mining permit if he were intending to do that. But what I understand is being proposed is a subdivision development, and that won't require a surface mining permit. He will be, he will be doing hauling operations in conjunction with a subdivision development.
The reason that, Jay, the reason that we have this 3.9 for right now, he has a ridge that we looked at on Topo Mountain. While they're getting their proposed plans together for Buster, this ridge, he can take some dirt and make that to where he can build on it, but it's about a three or so acre ridge that this is 90 days and limited, really very limited for surface mining, to get that ridge to where he can build on it and grow.
Any other questions?
Ryan, you understand totally, don't you?
Did that answer any of your questions?
Oh, yeah.
Did that answer your questions?
When, when does the 90-day permit actually begin?
When it's issued, probably today or tomorrow.
Can I ask the question? Then if the subdivision is approved.
Y'all come forward. Please come forward. We should have just had, we should have just had you sit up there in the front row.
If the subdivision is approved, how much dirt can be moved for the subdivision?
A lot. That, well, that'll be, I mean, and that has a lot to do with the topo and the plans of the elevation of those lots. We are implementing some stuff that says that lots cannot be so, so many inches below the road or so many inches above the road to, where you don't get flooded if they built everything up high and it just run off. But that's really the engineers.
Yeah, engineer.
I'm kinda curious, would we end up with an open pit if you're taking out dirt to build a subdivision? I mean, would we end up with the same concept?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, you gotta have, you gotta have a good, you gotta have good dirt in order to put, put houses on.
Right, I understand. I just didn't know what, if there were limitations.
There will be a lot of dirt taken out of there, though.
And it'll be something possibly brought in to build, to build the house pad.
What this developers want to do is mine that knot out so it's all level. It's not a matter of going out in good level ground, digging a big hole. It's a matter of bringing a high spot down to basically the same elevation as the surrounding terrain.
So there'll still be a lot of dirt coming in and out, a lot of dump trucks. Will the trucks be limited where they can exit an entrance? Will they go straight out onto Lakeland, or will they be sent down Stoll in the east direction? Or will they go straight back out?
I have a feeling they're gonna go right to 25.
I mean, I would hope so, but they were going the other direction.
Oh, really?
They go out on Lakeland? Okay. That would help a lot, you know, not to tear up the road.
But there will be some, in building any development, there's gonna be dirt moving in and out. I mean, that's just building a house pad, if you're building your own house pad.
I understand that.
I can tell you, every development, we're gonna have some days that we wish that maybe concrete trucks wasn't coming in or out.
All right.
And there, there's gonna be some things that we're not just completely thrilled about, but I have a feeling that with the county's involvement and these guys' understanding, it's gonna be as good as we can make it.
Well.
They're gonna keep an eye on it, and I think he is too.
Well, that'll help, because I know we all, we all met, half of us are here, with it being a gravel slash dirt road, it doesn't take much to turn it into a mud bog, so, which it did become.
Right.
At his entrance there for a little while, to the point that you almost couldn't get in and out of the road. So with that much work going on, we're just concerned.
We discussed, we discussed that with the road manager in our meeting, and.
Got it all worked out?
I can't tell you that we won't have to go and say, hey, we need some more travel, or we need a better landing, but if we do, we will.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Thank you.
And he has said he's gonna have a contained dust, so that's part of the condition, so that's.
Hey, Craig, do we have any type of assurance that once all this starts, we aren't going to end up with a development?
The, the assurance that we have is that at present, he's got permission to operate on 3.9 acres out of 200. That's eventually gonna play out. You eventually end up with not a whole lot of work or effort needed on four acres. So if you're gonna do something with the acres.
Once we have a plat, and he gets to go ahead, start rubbing, moving all the dirt.
Yes, sir. He's got up to a year from that date, Jay, to make something happen there, or he loses his permission on that subdivision.
But he gets a year hauling dirt out of there without getting something done.
I, I think when the subdivision plat is provided to us and Buster gets a look at it and sees what the topos are and sees, sees what the elevations are, and we look at stormwater management aspects of that and retention and that type of thing, we'll have a pretty good feel for what needs to happen on the total site.
The reason why I ask, we had a gentleman before, came in, wanted to do the exact same thing. He said, all right, well, I'm gonna just do a subdivision. Well, he came in and mined it all out and left. There was no subdivision installed, so.
There's a difference.
I think it's fair to, to ask that we make sure with the subdivision at the end of this.
Well, that is true, but now, are we only mining 3 points, and he only has 90 days to get that done?
Well, I think what Jay's saying, after the 90 days and we have a subdivision plat approved, a year from now, if they're just, still just mining and not, or violating whatever Buster has approved, are we gonna stop and step in?
I thought you said he couldn't mine after 90 days.
Well, only to move the dirt for the development of the subdivision, whatever's approved with Buster for building a lot or.
Oh, in, within the subdivision.
Yeah.
There's an aspect of policing it. Obviously, the, the residents out there are gonna wanna know answers to questions if they see an awful lot of dirt hauling activity and very little evidence of house sites being installed. I think at that point, it would bear us looking into and asking some further questions.
What do we have?
It is a permit, by the way, and so we can police it that way.
Well, I was just going to add, the construction plan's gonna be approved before the 90-day period.
Right.
Construction plans will have elevations on them, so you'll know within the construction plans what can, can't be removed from the site, and that's easy enough to come out of the spade. But, I mean, it's not, okay, we've got a construction plan to keep the topography at a certain level, so we're gonna go ahead and set it out. I mean, you gotta comply with the construction plan, and you're living through the process. So obviously, if it deviates significantly from the construction plan, you guys have recourse to, once the ticket's confirmed, to do whatever you gotta do.
I'm sure you're gonna do it. I, I just wanted to ask, make sure we, we're all on the same page, we are going up with a development. Thank you.
Any further? Anything further?
A great development.
Anything further? Anybody? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action. And again, Steve, you need those, you need those conditions again, right quick? Okay, the conditions are that the 3.9-acre surface mine operation would be approved, subject to the following condition, hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday, dust control with a water truck, must, the property owner must adhere to the Rankin County stormwater requirements, and the conditional use is granted for a period of 90 days from the date of issuance of the permit. Okay?
My motion to, that we accept it.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines. To accept this, with these conditions, to approve this with these conditions.
Yes.
Do you have a second? Okay.
Jay?
We got a motion.
I say it.
Second, okay. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed. Okay.
Okay, the last item under my section is a public hearing on the George Winston Conditional Use Permit, 114 Adams Road. Mr. Winston is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 1995 14 by 56 manufactured[1704.12]
Mr. Winston is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 1995 14 by 56 manufactured home on 114 Adams Road. It's a 2.39 acre parcel zoned RE1. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the George Winston Conditional Use Permit.
Anyone?
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'll be appropriate to take action.
Do you have anything on that, Renee? Anything?
That's, uh, that's where they put my trailer and it's, the house, the lots, okay, and stuff? Yep, yep. Yep, okay.
Your motion approved?
Yeah, motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Gaines?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mara, any discussion? All favors, aye, aye, I'll oppose. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mara, host, anything else?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna, if we don't mind, I'm gonna sneak Greg Thompson in here. He is our acquisition agent, working with us on the Gunner Road project. I suspect that we may have some, some fair market values to talk to you guys about.
Another, another round of, uh, valuation.
You'll notice on this, on the summary list, uh, the second and third item, we both have Q deeds. You notice the Earl Hudson Estate and Carolyn Risher. Those are, those are both leasehold interests on 16th Section land. That's what that Q deed means. So this is the first of the 16th Section land, uh, that we've looked at.
Just from my ignorance, does that money go to the leaseholder or to go to 16th Section?
The.
Or do you make a joint and let them fight it out?
It, no, it, it has, they both have an interest, so, uh, the Rankin County Board, uh, School Board will have an interest, and then the leaseholder will have an interest. So it's two separate, uh, pieces, but we value those under the same file.
I got you.
So where does the money go?
Uh, both, both will get a payment.
Any improvements that he get that's going to the leaseholder, any, just for the dirt, pure dirt going to the school board?
Land and improvements would go to the school board, and then there's, uh, the leasehold interest. If they have, well, yeah, if they have improvements, they will get paid. We've met with both.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, motion approved, motion approved, Mr. Mara, second. Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
I have questions, oh. How, how do we get area requisition zero and it's $500?
That is the, the quick claim deed for the leasehold interest. They don't actually own any of the land, they, there's no real property.
So who are we paying the $500 to? Right. I think I'm not in appraisal business.
By the way, y'all, y'all just added that to your motion, so.
Oh, we got a vote on it, I slowed him up.
That's alright, so y'all might want to go ahead and take that up.
Alright, motion added to the agenda, uh, motion by, Mr. Mara, second. Mr. Gaines, any discussion, more discussion? All favors, aye, aye, I'll oppose.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Mr. Mara.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors, aye, aye, I'll oppose.
That, that's fine, man, if I don't understand it, everybody else is good with it, I'm alright.
Thank you.
But isn't that pretty much standards? I mean, is there a choice?
You'll be paying the school district for the dirt, surely.
I figure if our resident appraiser is okay with it, and I think.
Don't even try to make that connection. Put me on that hook.
Well, you made the motion.
Well, I think, I was fine with the numbers, but I don't, I don't get into their, their side of the game.
Aye.
Really?
Nice try, nice try, though, nice try. Pay for effort.
He did it softball, actually, you see?
The only item that I have this morning is discussion of and potential action on the revision of the Rankin County Multipurpose Pavilion Facility Rules, Regulations, Rental Fees and Contract. I emailed that to all of y'all to have a chance to look over. Mike can answer any questions that you have, I'll do my best to. Ken Sullivan, and basically, is the one that worked this up. Uh, Mike had a lot of input on it. Before, I think we only had like a fee schedule that the board had approved. There are some changes, this has the, uh, contract for renting it. One of the main changes is the, um, nonprofit status going from 250 to 500. Ken brought quite a few, um, pages to me from the Secretary of State in clubs that are supposedly Rankin County, but their principal address is outside of our county. Some of the other things are, um, we just spell out damages for payments, the deposit, non-assignment, that somebody can't rent it and assign it to somebody else for, you know, that they've gotten a, a better price. The insurance, um, notifications, what we have to have there, setting up an event. They have shortened the time of that to the hours of setting it up because it keeps our local people from being able to ride, because, how long was it before, Mike? The setup was? Right.
It was 24 hours.
Right, so they've, they've shortened that to the afternoon between 3:00 and 7:00 for the setup, so the guys can, um, pack the dirt or whatever they have to do. They, we have added a fee for, um, to the promoter for packing and unpacking the arena. There are some, um, new things in here that if somebody rents 100 or more stalls, the original fee can be waived, but we get the stall fee, which would mean actually a greater amount for the county. Vendors, it has a section in here on vendors, the new concrete pad that we have, vendor space is $50 a day for 100 square feet and plus $20 if they're going to plug into the electricity. There is also a new provision in here after midnight, if they have rented the facility, and to keep people from just lingering past that, that there would be additional charges. And then cancellation, um, requirements, insurance, um, how many days notice they have to give. Mike, can you think of anything else that is different? Right, from 250 to 500, and then the other one was if they rent 100 or more stalls, that the county would get that money, their fee of 750 would be waived.
I would still like to see a show when it is booked on a calendar, so make a look on our website to see what, what's available, what's not available.
They're supposed to be out there.
Steve, do you, you aware of the major users, want to come back every year? Do they need to kinda take a peek at this before we adopt it? I mean, I don't, you know more about the folks that come on a regular basis than, than I do.
They're some of the reasons.
Okay, we just getting too, too good a deal?
Well, I, you know, I, I really don't wanna have it up for, uh, an auction or, or really a debate. I wouldn't mind having them, if they wanna come in and let, uh, Ken and Mike go over the changes, set up a time.
I was asking a question, man, I was gonna put whoever the users are.
These are compatible to other areas, we checked, and, uh, what we found out, sometimes too, they'll, uh, book it for just weekend after weekend and weekend because it got such a good deal.
I believe that Ken said that he called, I know Meridian is one of them.
Hattiesburg, yeah, that's.
The, the ones that are surrounding us, so they can't say, well, I can go over to Meridian because I get a better deal. This is the same thing that they do.
We, there's, I mean, there's some stuff that we've just been getting fleeced, including the Vintage Marketplace.
I would agree.
But.
And we're not, you know, just gonna cover the vintage markets or, you know, bigger, bigger things like that. We're not discussing that, but, you know, as far as your day-to-day shows, I mean, we're not even, we're not even covering, took this, we're not even covering one person's cost stuff, are we?
Nor, nor the utilities and the.
And it seemed like I heard Vintage Marketplace is already reserved November?
Yep.
For, come back around?
They have, we do not, as I know of, we do not have a signed contract, but they are on the calendar.
Yeah, we sure need to look at that club. And, you know, and I said, why don't we get a percentage of vendors? And she said, oh, we'll just have to go somewhere else. They weren't going anywhere else. They, uh.
And also, I believe that was one of the reasons that they changed this, um, unpacking, packing and unpacking, the fee on that, because they said that the dirt was, you can tear up a machine trying to unpack it after an event like that, that it was so, it was so packed down.
Just, I mean, a lot of the little things in this, like, some of these know that they have a show and they wanna rent it for one day for $250, and they know they're not gonna get through in that 24 hours. They'll run all the way up in the next morning, just so they don't have to pay another $250. And, you know, we gotta, we can't have people down there that long for that, for one show. And, and that's why, that the lot, the hours is on it like that, and the stalls.
I don't have any problem with what they propose.
No, we're just explaining, so you get asked.
It's, I mean, like a $750 rental fee, and then they use 200 stalls, and they rent them for $25 a day. You know? So it's just some adjustments that, uh, and I really would like to, uh, let Lawrence, Mike and Ken, I mean, I'd like to take the politics out of it and them not feel like that, oh, I, I'll call Bob, or I'll call Steve, or I'll call Jared. I mean, I'd like for people to run like a business, and, uh, this is a price. If it's not good for you, then go fishing.
Well, another thing you're planning to do, if you look to a lot of the ones that, uh, are renting, they wanna, they indicate they're Rankin County, but they're all, their home base is.
Most.
Everywhere else.
Most of the time. It's especially those that are getting the greatest deals. I'm not saying there's no one from Rankin County participating in their show, but I bet it's less than 10% of the population, you know? And we still have priority and wanna do everything we can for Rankin County agriculture, kids, whether it's horses or cows or whatever. I mean, that, but, but man, when they come in here and they can walk away after two days, give us $1,500 and they pocket $10,000, um, and we know that we've, we know that we, well, we're trying to be economical and make this balance.
Another thing, another thing, you just so you know, uh, this has been going on forever, but, uh, they say they're working under somebody else's nonprofit, they wouldn't be from here. They just, they're working under your nonprofit, I'm working under your nonprofit, and I'm, I'm from Northman City.
So do we need to vote on this?
We don't have to today. You, I mean, y'all can, if you, if you feel prepared, if not, we could bring it back on the 15th.
Let's, let's bring it back on the 15th.
Craig had something that he wanted to mention too, that we probably need to put in here.
Just, just to be thinking about, you know, as we think about the policy itself. About three years ago, we had, um, an outfit out of West Texas, I believe, maybe somewhere out west, that provides all of the stock for the Dixie National Rodeo.
Oh, and they get a discount?
Yeah, they book for, well, actually, they get, they, they were allowed to utilize the nonprofit rate as a part of their rental, okay? And that was at a special request of our Commissioner of Agriculture. They didn't qualify under the nonprofit previously, and so we, basically, we made an accommodation because of the affiliation with the Dixie National. So I want to remind you about that. That's typically a use that is booked well in advance. In fact, I would suspect that it's already on the books for next year. That's in that February timeframe, they come in on a particular day, they're there for a solid two-plus weeks, and then there's a date certain that they exit. And, uh, they, the last two years, they've been good about hitting their deadlines when they were supposed to, but I want to point that out to you that we may need to think about adding some sort of accommodation for those, um, entities that are affiliated directly with the Dixie National.
Well, I think we, we will have, also have that choice expression on, anyway, we, we have that flexibility.
Yes, so if we're gonna make a change there, use our flexibility to make a change, we're definitely gonna wanna communicate that back up the food chain, uh, 'cause you'll hear about it.
What, what would you recommend for us, something in the policies? I see what you're saying, we always have the opportunity, and then once you start making changes for somebody, then somebody else comes, well, you did it for them, how can you not do it for me?
We, we tried to be real specific, that it had to be a direct affiliation with the Dixie National. Entities that are directly affiliated with the Dixie National. In other words, there's a contract. Okay, so they provide us with a copy of their contract with the Dixie National, and then that, that's what triggers the special accommodation. They can't produce that contract or a letter from the Commissioner.
Well, I mean, to be honest, the Commissioner of Agriculture, not Cindy, but before her, uh, built these buildings. I mean, I know we built it, but originally, they gave us the money to build the first one over on 80. We sold it for such a profit and put that money over here, and they got some more money from Department of Agriculture. I mean, if you go back and do the math, Rankin County doesn't have any.
I don't have any problem with accommodation, I just, I just want it all here, spell it out in the, in the.
But that would be why.
We got plenty of real money in it, well, I can assure you that. We got lots of money, County Board.
Well, if you look, we sold the lot and the building for 7.7 or 8 million dollars that was over here on, on the highway. I don't think that we spent.
That was for my time, but.
Well, I'm just telling you, that was 20, we don't have 7.8 million out here.
I know, we put against 3 million in it after I was in here, so.
Think about 7 minus 3.
Well, I don't know what it costs to originally build it.
State built it for $150,000, and the land was donated. Jim Buck Ross paid for it.
Okay.
So there's, I mean, there's still 4 million out there that you could operate on.
No, it ain't.
Well, you're right, we sent it to Pearl, that's right. We sent it over to Pearl.
We, we spent it on Stoll Road, right, Steve?
I don't think so, not unless, oh.
I mean, should've said it before.
Okay. It's grown.
Okay, so we're gonna wait on that and, uh, talk about our next meeting?
That's what you're gonna do?
I, I'd say wait, give it two weeks, let the dust settle.
Okay. Alright.
Put it out there with draft across, across.
Well, yeah, but don't put my number under it. No, I, I mean, I, they're, I.
I think Steve's commenting, they're not gonna like it, but we're getting ready to raise the fees, you know?
Well, it's not gonna affect, the people in Rankin County should understand, they're the ones that pay the taxes, uh, and it's not gonna affect individuals in Rankin County very much. It's the bigger shows, that, and they're still gonna get a wonderful deal if they were to shop it for, for other venues.
Right, I mean, we were just, we were planning on having a meeting with all the president, tell them everything, but didn't know, didn't know what we need to do beforehand or after, you know?
Well, let's do it, and then if y'all see something that comes out there that you wanna tweak, we can do, we can tweak it before we approve it. But I still would like, the people that's gonna be managing it, I'd like for y'all to have a big say.
Can we call this a Gaines trap?
No.
It's Gaines, boy.
No, no.
We'll put it out there.
Alright, I'll get that down next week.
That's all I have.
No executive session?
I don't.
Really?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, we out here for 10 o'clock.
Additional business, no additional business, and no executive session?
Mike, you got something?
Surely somebody's got one more thing.
Chelsea, got anything over there?
Forgot.
Craig, I think I borrowed you that the other day. Did you approve, I did it right? State aid, we got, we got our state aid list back.
Star Brandon Road, Star Brandon.
What about Star Brandon?
There's about 10.
We got, well, it's Star Brandon White Road, it's, it's your state aid road that's gonna be overlaid this year.
Yep, they're not moving the mailboxes, I noticed that.
What about it?
I got a list of the mailboxes that's got to be moved.
Oh, oh, okay, alright.
The list that we have is, uh, directly related to Star Brandon. Every address that you send me, it's Star Brandon, so.
Hey, you must not have got, you must not got it all, 'cause it had White Road on it, it had all of them. I reckon, but Jake called me the other day and, uh, I mean, they're in the design process, a little further in the design process, but the projects will not even be let.
Am I correct? Well, we need to move on forward doing something.
Until these are done.
Oh, none of them? Or just Star Brandon Road?
No, none of them.
None of them.
If you give them the, we're gonna give them the time to get it done. Warn them that they got to do something about the mailbox, it has not happened. It has not happened in order to move project forward. The county has authorized under law actually to move the mailboxes.
You gotta show, you better get ready to do them. They're, they're sitting on them now. They're not gonna move them.
Look, I mean, I don't know how long we're looking at. Mr. Buster might be able to tell you.
I don't even know, I know one, same mailbox, been there all this time, three or four of them sitting together.
Yeah. I'm gonna say in the next 30 days, we'll be at serious, mate.
Well, bottom line, we don't want you to lose the money.
That's right.
My goodness.
Yeah, we done already lost some of it, so I mean, we don't need to...
I think they'll like the road after it's done, they'll get over the mailbox once, if we specially put one back up.
They have to.
The brick ones now, have we got any, any of those brick?
The ones on the list that I saw that were Star Brandon were cashed out and bounty poles that exceeded the 2-inch limit.
I think the only brick ones in Jake's there.
Thanks, man.
I, I really do, I mean, I think, I think it's on the other side of the road, I mean, I really do. Because Steve's got one that looks like brick, but it's not brick.
Well, I need those numbers.
What do we decide about the cities?
I, I'm not notifying properties that are inside city limits.
Oh, man, why wouldn't we do that?
I know, a really nice brick one inside the city of Brandon, on Brandon Star.
We're fixing to hold this up for my project, somebody needs to tell them.
Well, what we gonna do? Oh, well, you need, we need to send a letter to the cities, that they need it, otherwise they go...
Yeah, because when they...
We just move outside city limits and start. How about that?
C'mon, I know the one they're gonna want. They just built a church there. Get a bloody church. So you'll share those numbers with them?
You'll give me just a minute when I get out of here.
Well, I mean, it ain't gotta be today, but...
I'll give them that.
I hate y'all, I hate y'all, this cartoon guy that did still with Larry Ledger, when we did this year, he goes, you know, he did the cartoons in the paper, and he drew our pictures in the mailboxes and...
Well, don't, don't give them any ideas. White Road, yeah. Chelsea might want to do a reminder. Well, seriously, can we not send a letter to the cities?
And ask them to notify their people?
Absolutely. I wasn't intending to send it to any city, if they're ready to the cities.
But if we don't, they gonna play oblivious to it.
Yeah, I, my interaction would be back with the state aid and pointing out to them.
Okay.
You should, you should require the cities to send out...
All right, well, do that then. Yeah, I mean, we're not the one...
It shouldn't be our responsibility to tell state aid, you told us about mailboxes that are not subject to our jurisdiction.
You need to drive out there looking and whatnot.
I was just gonna say, outside the city, and y'all need to...
I don't have that many of them, but, but the ones, I still think all be city spots built. And they need to understand, it's not brick, it's mailboxes that are not even filed. I mean, they, their head is just a, I don't have a brick one.
It's closed, I'm not sure how far...
Y'all recall, the, the letter informs them that state aid has regulations, the Office of State Aid has regulations, in order for the county to participate in their program, the county is forced to enforce somebody else's regulations. That's what I say, basically, in the show. And I tried to be as diplomatic as I could. It may not have been quite as diplomatic as it should have been, but make it clear that these are state regulations, that the state has decided to make the county enforce, and that in order for the county to participate in that program, in other words, to not lose money, mailboxes have to be grown in the months, period.
And I know that it's not best economics, but we get four, a little over $4 million dollars a term out of state aid money, is that right?
That's about right.
4.3, something like that, which would be a million dollars a year. At some point, their regulations are gonna cost us more than what they're good for, and... Not yet.
Not on mailboxes?
Not yet. No, not yet, but...
Post, excuse me, mailbox post.
It's...
Mailboxes are not the only regulations they put...
Right, that's not the only thing, and, and I'm, we're having to be the bad guy, you know, and anyhow.
My lot, it's earning a thousand a mile.
Right, when you think of all the territory that...
I know, we don't know what to do since we're not 10 o'clock yet, we're done, but when's our next meeting? Have we, did y'all vote Thursday, when y'all went to Washington?
Before 10:00.
Y'all voted on all that Thursday, we're going in the morning.
Okay.
He wasn't here, I guess, when we got out before 10:00. You must have missed those.
Boy, that's very seldom. The 15th, I make most recess the 15th.
Yeah, okay, most recess the 15th, Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Moore, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
All favors, aye? All folks?